All right, Candy, let me know when you're ready.
I'm ready.
All right, that makes one of us. Good evening, it's Tuesday, April 26, 2022, this is the Stoughton City Council Meeting, and the first order of business would be the roll call.
Okay, Caravella.
Here.
Tukowski.
Here.
Vanegas.
Absent and excused.
Okay. Schumacher.
Here.
Hunt.
Here.
Reeves.
Here.
Mieski.
Here.
Legaki.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Hirsch.
Here.
Healy. And Raff.
Here.
We have eleven Alders present, one absent and excused.
All right, thank you Candy. Minutes and reports are in the packet as usual. Public comment period, I did have one person signed up to speak, and that would be Carl Chenoweth. Carl, you can come up, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Swadley. I kind of half apologized for coming here tonight because I didn't have a topic on the agenda to publicly speak, but I did have an issue that's facing our community here in the immediate future is the redistricting issue that we've been, everybody's been talking about, how Stoughton now is in the 43rd District, which is a district that extends from Stoughton south into Rock County, down approximately footfield. And it takes in the whole city of Edgerton, which it originally did, and it takes in the Village of Oregon, and the town of Dunn, and the town of Pleasant Springs at this point, which was, which is new to the district. Part of the issue was, it was a last-minute ruling from the Supreme Court after it went around with the US Supreme Court, and back and forth, and I think everybody thought at the time that the Governor Evers' fair maps were going to be the controlling districting maps for the entire state, and what happened at the last minute was that the legislative maps that were adopted back in November were basically ruled on as being acceptable by the Supreme Court. So, what amounted to was, the 43rd District gained a number of northern, not northern Dane County, but northern communities that resided in Dane County, but it also eliminated the city of Milton, which represented for the 33rd, was, 43rd was Representative Don Verwink. And his residence was in Milton, and it basically got boundaried out of the district. So now he's in 33, so this past, actually yesterday, he issued a public statement, a public press release that he's not running in the 43rd anymore, as reported in the Stoughton Hub last week. He'll be running in the 33rd for, against whatever opposition he might have at that time, but he'll be running in that district he lives in now. So, and in fact, it leaves an open seat in 43rd. As most of you, some of you know, I registered for that seat last week, and along with another candidate out of the Village of Oregon. And I hope to get around and talk to everybody at that point, and within the next couple of days, and talk to you about some of the ideas I have for the district, and what it means to Stoughton, I think, in the long run. And so, just wanted to make that clear to everybody, that this is how it's, it's kind of evolving here. And if you have any questions at all, please don't hesitate to call me. I think my number's public enough, you can find me somewhere. And I'll be in town, but appreciate the time tonight, and again, Mayor Swadley, thank you for allowing me to talk on something not on the agenda. And before I go, I haven't had a chance to thank my predecessor, I guess it's predecessor, my successor, yes, I'm sorry. Successor for the county board, I stepped down, as everybody knows, I stepped down from the board after ten years of service, and Supervisor Engelberg has stepped up to represent the community. And I think it's going to be an excellent choice, it's an excellent vote choice, and I look forward to seeing great things from his office, and great things still happening here from this board, or this council over the next, the next couple of years. It's been, it's been a pleasure working with Mayor Swadley, and I hope to continue that relationship at the state level. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have communications and presentations. Are there any communications from Alders this evening? All right, you might notice that there's several proclamations in your packet. Appreciate if you take a moment to at least look at them at some point if you haven't already. Some great work, a lot of volunteer work continues to happen in the city of Stoughton. I know there was a team that were out with our Park and Recreation Department, doing some cleanup on Earth Day this weekend, and they, they overachieved, they had quite a large group, and they started one area, and they finished up so early that they went out and ventured into some other areas. So we appreciate those volunteering in our community. For council members, those that are in person tonight, I brought your mail with you. Those that are zooming in, if you have an opportunity to stop by City Hall and pick up your mail, there is a mailbox there for you, that would be great. If not, I'll bring it at the next meeting, and we can distribute it as we come across each other. We can get into our regular business, the first item is our consent agenda. Looks like there's four items on the consent agenda, I would entertain a motion to approve. Motion by Jensen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Mieski, would anybody like anything acted on separately from this?
I have a couple of changes to the minutes from April 12.
Okay.
And one is that Carl Chenoweth, he lives on Garfield Street and not Chenoweth Street. Which is so cute. And there is, in the last bullet, in under communications and presentations, there is a sentence next to last that says, "Results were delayed at the county level due to a system delay that affected," and there's an A that is, should be removed. So it just should say, "That affected several municipalities."
All right. And we'll make those changes. Anything else?
No.
Alder Person Healy?
I noticed on the operator licenses that a few had no place of business listed, is that, do we issue operator licenses to people independently sometimes?
I believe we do, I'll let the clerk answer the question though.
Yes, we do that. There are people that are applying for a license, so they can apply for different places of business, and they don't have one listed at the time when they apply, so.
Understood, thanks.
Yep.
All right, anything else on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. I believe that I'm supposed to move item number 14 up, is that correct Rodney? And that would be an item that was at finance, and we just want to get this synced up, so we're going to take action on that one first, and that's Resolution 86. Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R 86, 2022, approving a pre-annexation agreement between the city of Stoughton and ROB Real Estate Brokerage and Builders LLC, and so move.
Second.
So motion by Schumacher, second by Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, this one caught me a little bit off guard, I wasn't ready to speak to this one just yet.
I can pull it up as well. And Rodney's available through Zoom if you need any assistance.
Yeah, rather than me fumble through it, find notes and things.
If you'd like me, or I could give a short little summary?
Yeah, please, if you would.
Yeah, this is a pre-annexation agreement that outlines some of the expectations for reimbursement related to likely a residential development. It's your next item on your old business agenda for the second reading for the annexation ordinance related to this location. I think it's pretty straightforward, you've seen these customarily done in areas where we have residential-type development occurring.
All right, anything you want to add, Attorney Dragney?
Nope.
There it is.
Any questions or comments from Alders?
I have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Alder Person Hunt, go ahead.
Is this the property that's in the corner of Acre Road and Fourth Street? It is.
Yes, the southern end of Page Street extending to Acre, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, thank you. That'll take us into our old business, we have a second reading for ordinance 10, and that would be coming from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Caravella.
And, yes, I'm going to try to see if I can see this one in front of me.
I'll pull it up for you as well. There you have it.
Okay, yes, I found it too. Okay, thank you, this is ordinance 10 of 2022. This is the second reading of this, I believe, and this is an ordinance providing for the direct annexation by unanimous approval of a portion of the town of Dunkirk to the city of Stoughton, Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
And is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alder Person Hunt, Alder Person Caravella, go ahead.
And this is, as we were just speaking of, this is that area bordered generally by Fourth and Acre. Fourth to the east and Acre to the south, basically a page street, and that's it.
All right, anything else you want to add, Director Scheel?
Just wanted to add, this is part of our comprehensive plan for residential development. We've begun to see some initial concepts for residential layout here. Having it annexed into the city is the first step to move through that process for development.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries, thank you very much. Next ordinance also comes as a second reading from the Plan Commission, Alder Person Caravella.
Yes, this is ordinance 11 of 2022, an ordinance providing for the direct annexation by unanimous approval of a portion of the town of Pleasant Springs to the city of Stoughton, Dane County, Wisconsin, and I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Schumacher, Alder Person Caravella.
And this is annexation of approximately 20 acres from Pleasant Springs at the area that is at the basically corner of Glacier Marine Drive and Williams Drive.
All right, anything you'd like to add, Director Scheel?
You've been introduced to this, this is a second reading on the particular annexation ordinance. There's a number of items on your agenda tonight related to this. This is to accommodate the Emmy Roth industrial plant, as well as their headquarters, and so this would be the first step in doing so. You might recall, we also approved an application for supplemental to the Capitolary Regional Planning Commission related to this site for the urban service area amendment, to accommodate that use there as well.
All right, thank you. Any questions or comments from Alders on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. All right, takes us to new business, and the first one is also coming from the Plan Commission, that's Resolution 82.
Yep, this one is Resolution 82 of 2022, approving a conditional use permit request for an indoor commercial entertainment use, parentheses, restaurant tavern-type uses, at 183 slash 187 East Main Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Okay, was that President Hirsch? Or was it Tukowski?
Yes, it's Hirsch.
Okay, thank you. And Alder Person Caravella.
This is for the language, is I think something interesting about the address is, this is the upstairs space that is used, that is known as Cheesers, and they want to have a wine tasting, demonstrations, classes, that sort of type of activity space in the upstairs, which is currently, I believe, still occupied as a bead store. One interesting thing about this is there's a shared hallway, so there was discussion about, some considerable discussion about making this workable at planning due to the upstairs of the Cheesers building and the upstairs of the gallery building, which is next door to the east, have a shared hallway upstairs, which residents of the upstairs of the gallery building would be sharing this hallway with this space used not for residential purposes upstairs of Cheesers.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Director Scheel?
Just to continue some of the discussion at the Plan Commission level was the recognition that that hallway isn't intended to be utilized for the customers, for the Cheesers' expanded facility, other than for emergency exit purposes only. There is an internal stairwell from within Cheesers that is the primary route to and from the upper level, and the intended route is discussed by the owner and the applicant. Their interest is having their customers come up and come down the interior stairwell to likely review additional purchases that they may make on their way out from that facility during that time. There was also some requests to ensure that the doors were lockable from the outside of the second floor into the area. Obviously, they have to be emergency exit doors, but certainly the intention is to have those doors locked within the hallway so you can't gain access into that space by the customers from the hallway.
All right, it looks like Alder Person Hunt has his hand up, go ahead.
I was wondering, are there any restrictions on the restaurant/tavern-type uses as far as the installation of equipment, like deep fat fryers, or hood vents, or anything that might conflict with our code on that kind of stuff?
Yeah, there hasn't been any indication that there is planned to be kitchen equipment that would require plans submitted for that type of improvement. If there is that type of improvement anticipated in the building anyplace, you would have to go through a permitting process and likely even a state plan review.
Okay.
I have Alder Person, who wants to go first?
Go ahead.
No, go ahead Lisa.
Alder Person Reeves, and then Schumacher.
I had also a question just about the restaurant tavern-type use, because it's, and I could have missed something, but it sounds like they're going to be doing primarily tastings, and I don't remember hearing that language for the property that's going to do tastings at the corner, and I wish I could remember the address, but there's retail, there's tastings, there's the sauna.
Montage.
Oh, the Ashley's.
Yeah, and so I was just curious about what constitutes restaurant tavern versus, I don't recall hearing that language for the other properties, so I was interested in hearing more about that.
Yes, so some of the distinction is the fact that there is going to be a charge for the tasting in this facility, whereas the other facility that wasn't going to be a charged tasting location. The indoor, indoor commercial entertainment is the conditional use application, and the, and the use that it falls within. Now, there's a number of uses that fall within that title, but certainly, this is not being applied for as a tavern on the second floor. It's certainly a representative of the application that they've submitted. There's hours of the conditional use, has no alcohol sales after 9:00 PM on the second floor as part of the conditions outlined in the, in the resolution.
Thank you.
Alder Person Schumacher.
And Rodney, going off of the discussions in that that we had in Plan Commission around this, because that, that emergency exit, or the stairwell was about considerable discussion on that, Fire Chief Rip had a chance to weigh in on that, and he's all right with that, is that true?
Yeah, actually, the deputy fire chief and the, as the fire marshal actually has visited the site, checked for the exiting requirements that would be necessary for that facility, and they are comfortable that they meet those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have one.
Oh.
I'm wondering if, for the interior stairwell, if you encountered any safety or accessibility issues related to that? I'm guessing you didn't, but I thought I would ask.
That wasn't, that wasn't evaluated, but that's certainly a code-constructed stairwell, is our understanding.
Okay. And there's no requirement for an alternate accessible entrance or exit there?
So, so actually, interestingly enough, now that they'll have the use on both floors, they have the ability to offer alternative locations for the use. In other words, they could do accessible, meet accessible requirements on the first floor and still offer that service on the third floor if necessary.
Okay, great, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments on this one? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is R 83, Alder Person Caravella.
And this one is R 83 of 2022, approving a certified survey map for one parcel at the northeast corner of Williams Drive and Glacier Marine Drive, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Mieski, Alder Person Caravella.
And this is just the certified survey map request for property located at the northeast corner that we mentioned earlier of Williams Drive and Glacier Marine Drive for the purposes of the Emmy Roth facility.
All right, anything you want to add, Director Scheel?
Really just creates the boundaries utilizing a mapping process for the recently annexed property.
All right, any questions or comments on this one?
One question, does that border our industrial park?
It does, on the south side of Glacier Marine Drive is, is our, if you will, expansion of our business park area.
Pretty logical extension of things for services and whatnot.
It certainly is, it's part of our comprehensive plan for this type of use, and it is, has been envisioned for this type of use in that area, as part of that plan.
Quite a bit of the infrastructure's already been there, the road, sewer, water. Obviously, they'll have to do some things on-site, but a lot of the heavy lifting has already been done from previous development. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. We have ordinance 12 on for a first reading, Alder Person Caravella.
And this is a first reading of ordinance 12, 2022, approving a general development plan for property located at the northeast corner of Williams Drive and Glacier Marine Drive, Stoughton, Wisconsin.
All right, any description other than that you want to give at this point, or?
That's just, you know, what we've been discussing again for the Emmy Roth facility, just a rezoning request from, rezoning it from rural holding to planned development.
All right, anything you want to add, Director Scheel?
Just highlighting, one of the reasons it's going through a planned development process is the need for a slightly higher building elevation than is allowed in the standard industrial district. You'll note within the proposed ordinance language, there would be considered an exception. Recall, in the planned development district, you're allowed to make those exceptions. The comparisons are just made to show that what they would be in the representative traditional zoning district. So the request is for a 49-foot height as opposed to a 40-foot, and you also see that they're looking for some information on parking lot landscaping island size, and that's outlined in the application. Excuse me.
All right, are there any questions on this one for this evening? Hearing none, this one will be back at the next council meeting. If you have any additional questions between now and then, feel free to send them to Rodney or myself, and we'll be more than happy to get you some answers. Next item is R 84, and this one also came from the Plan Commission, you can see they've been busy. Alder Person Caravella.
We've had some stuff. This one is R 84, 2022, approving a conditional use permit request for an indoor commercial entertainment use, parentheses, Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu Studio, is I believe what they are aiming for here, in parentheses, at 2125 Macomb Road, Macomb Road, Suite 100, Stoughton, Wisconsin, and I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Caravella.
And as it read, this is a proposed use for this location. Formerly, I believe, the last locate, the last business that occupied this spot at this location was where the Jacobson Brothers Meat Market was formerly located.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one?
Just curious, commercial entertainment for the health and wellness aspect of this. Do we classify our places as commercial entertainment, like the other gyms?
Yeah, actually, that, that really raises the analogy I posed with the ECU P for Cheesers, that likewise was falling under this particular use. So it's got a wide breadth of uses that fall under the indoor commercial entertainment, but that is the use for other facilities for health and fitness as well.
Thank you Rodney.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions on this one? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Next item is a first reading, ordinance 13, Alder Person Caravella.
And this one is ordinance 13 of 2022, amending section 78-920 and 58-2 of the Stoughton Municipal Code relating to the abatement of zoning violations. And this is a first reading.
I'll let Attorney Dragney walk us through this one.
Yeah, I think this is what I, what I think will be the last ordinance you'll see after you've seen a number of ordinances that we've presented in recent months relating to nuisances and nuisance abatement. And what this ordinance does is removes from the zoning code the tool of an abatement process where the city would issue an order requiring abatement or changing, changing whatever's happening on the property that's a problem. We eliminated that from the zoning ordinance for a variety of reasons, and now, the, all of the nuisance-related
variety of reasons. And now the, the, all of the nuisance related, um, ordinances are in chapter fifty-eight, including, uh, in this ordinance, we have listed as a nuisance subject to abatement, uh, violation of the code, uh, that could include a violation of the zoning code that continues, uh, for more than a day. So a continuing violation of the, of the ordinances, including a continuing violation of the zoning code is something that it would now be defined as a nuisance and subject to this abatement process. So that was the, uh, that's, that's at a high level at least what's happening with this ordinance.
All right. Any questions or comments on this one? I'm hearing none. So this one will be back at the next meeting. Once again, if you have any questions between now and then, feel free to let us know. Um, next item is R eighty-five of twenty twenty-two and this one is also coming from, this one's coming from finance. Alder Person Schumacher.
Mayor, um, R eighty-five twenty twenty-two authorizing funding for twenty twenty-two services provided by Becker Professional Services, L L C. For economic development projects, uh, has come through finance on April twelfth, unanimous decision, I so move.
Second.
There's a motion, a second by Alder Person Reeves. Alder Person Schumacher.
Um, this is for Becker Professional Services, Gary Becker, um, and it includes, uh, some of the community projects like, uh, the riverfront development part, um, some of the East Main Street develop redevelopment, um, related to the, the Fab Lab expansion and/or in, or Innovation Center and a couple of other projects on there that are, that are listed in there, um, in the amount of seventy-one thousand dollars, seventy-one two fifty.
All right. Other initial questions or comments on this one? You know, I would just add, um, you know, there's the three categories. This money wasn't budgeted for this year, so that's why it's here tonight. And the plan would be going forward is, is to include something like this in next year's budget. We work with the finance department to make sure we had enough money in our, our fund balance in order to fund it for this year. The answer I received was positive. And you can see the three areas are with the R D A, the Innovation Center, which were in the process. I believe, uh, Gary Becker has submitted a grant. And then general economic development, which, uh, we're hoping that if this is approved tonight, uh, that Gary and, um, uh, his associate, his daughter Katrina, um, will be able to, uh, write a grant similar to what we did last year. We were able to secure, um, about seventy-five thousand dollars for the grand inspired building. Um, Gary, is there anything you want to discuss tonight?
Uh, no, that was a good, uh, description, Mayor. Thank you.
Sure. So we're hoping that we can, um, secure up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants for our area businesses. And Gary and Katrina and I have been visiting downtown businesses here in the last several weeks. We have a few more we're going to visit on Thursday to kind of take in the inventory of what we have, what opportunities might be available, especially in businesses that are looking to grow or businesses that have underutilized space. Um, we've had quite a bit of feedback so far and some of the challenges are on the upper units, um, to make them, say, affordable housing, for example. Um, some of them need a lot of repair work and they just can't make the numbers come out. So we're hoping that we can se- secure grant money to help offset the costs. Uh, the other things that we're hearing is some of the codes have changed over the years. So for example, on some of the upper units, uh, we may be required to put in fire suppression systems and we may in some cases have to upgrade our water lines going into the buildings to accommodate that, which is, um, you know, an expensive endeavor to go through. So those are all the types of things that we're evaluating as we're going through our downtown buildings. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Item fourteen we covered. Looks like, uh, fifteen and sixteen are coming from the plant commission. Alder Person Caravelo.
Uh, these are actually coming from Parks and Rec.
Oh, I'm sorry. There.
You are correct.
It's still you though. I had that part right.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is R eighty-seven of twenty twenty-two authorizing the director of Parks and Recreation apply for the, for the twenty twenty-two Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources stewardship local units of government, federal land and water conservation fund and recreational trails grant program for Yehara Riverfront Development Phase Three, uh, in parentheses, Matt Park Improvements and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by President Hirsch. Alder Person Caravelo.
And if, uh, Park and Rec Director Glenn is available, I'm gonna let him speak to this one if he would.
Sure. So this is a grant program. It's for outdoor recreation. It's through the D N R. Um, and, uh, the project is for the, you know, phase three of the Yehara Riverfront Development Project, which are the really the river corridor improvements or the first phase of the Man Park Master Plan. Um, we completed the thirty percent design for the project earlier this year and, um, the scheduled to complete about sixty and ninety percent design next year with construction in twenty twenty-four. So the improvements for this, uh, project included, you know, removing the northern section of Man Parkway that runs parallel with the river and replacing it with a ten-foot wide concrete, uh, trail system with river nodes that really matched the redevelopment site. Um, along with those river nodes, there's two eighty-eight canoe kayak launches. There's, um, parking improvements, um, that are really reconfiguring the parking in the park. So there'd be a parking, uh, small parking area in the northeast corner of the park along the river. Then there'll be another parking area that's parallel really to Fourth Street, the drop-off area near the restroom that would be placed in the northwest corner of the park. And I think if the mayor goes to the second page or the third page, it'll have a map of the site plan of the actual improvements. Um, you know, it's a thirty percent design, so there will be some changes, um, and some tweaks going forward, but mostly to the parking area and possibly the restroom. We've had some feedback from, um, possible concessionaires who want to run a rental operation out of there. And, um, there's been talk of like outdoor classroom and such, so. But, uh, this is all we have so far and the, the grant would be for one point five million and the city would be, um, the city's match would be for another one point five million. So the total cost is three million. Um, but you know, this grant application, this changes, you know, year to year, but, um, there's not a lot of changes and we are successful. You know, this is our, this would be our fourth year in a row applying for it. We've been successful the last three years, um, for this, really for this entire project because it's the sum of the components. And, um, you know, we've gotten the grant for the pedestrian bridge, riverwalk and R V A site. And then later tonight we'll talk more about the, the grant that we got, we were awarded for this past, uh, this past year. So just a resolution's required to authorize me to actually apply for the grant.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from Alders? Alder Person Hunt?
If we're unable to get that grant, would the city need to borrow three million dollars to do this work?
Um. So, I mean, it would have to be looked at, but yeah, the city would have to borrow more money than what's budgeted. Um, it is budgeted to, for what we have in the grant application. Uh, but you know, there are some parking facility impact fees that we could use possibly from the riverfront, uh, R V A site to offset some of the costs of the Man Park improvements.
So it might be slightly less than three million borrowed if we can move some of those other amounts around?
Yep, correct. And then we, we also have an outstanding grant, uh, application through the Economic Development Agency. And I didn't mention that, but, um, that, that's actually a sixty, forty percent cost share. So it's a less of a, um, less response, you know, less responsibility on the city's part. And then if we're successful with this grant, we could also use, um, that as some of our match towards the E D A grant.
So if we got that grant and sixty percent was supplied by the grant, we'd need to borrow about six hundred thousand? Something like that?
Uh, yeah, that's, that sounds about right.
Um, is the park work discretionary? Do, do we need to do this work?
Well, the parking lot's in pretty rough shape. The current parking situation is. And then eventually the roadway will need to get replaced. So I think it's probably prudent to actually move forward with it regardless if we get the grant funds or not.
Uh, question?
Uh, just a moment. Were you done? Alder Person Hunt? Okay. Alder Person Mieski, go ahead.
Um, isn't the grant for Man Park for an approved master plan that we've already voted on?
Yep, correct.
So, yeah, that's, so you're basically just following the master plan, not, not just redoing it because you're doing it.
Yeah, correct. Yeah, these are, uh, these improvements are all the first phase of the Man Park Master Plan.
All right.
Hopefully I will answer Fred's question regarding why you're switching it.
I'm clear on that.
Okay. Any other questions, uh, or statements? Alder Person Mieski?
I'm good.
Okay. And then I have Alder Person Healy.
Uh, just to clarify, uh, Dan did mention parking. Um, our consensus on the Parks Committee was, um, that the parking pictured in that thirty percent is not really in line with what we did approve in the master plan. Um, we felt that there was a lot more real estate dedicated to parking, um, in this thirty percent. And, um, that feedback's going to be passed on for the sixty percent, uh, engineering. So I, I would, I would not say that this is, as pictured, it's in line with our, um, master plan that we, uh, that we approved, but that the feedback has been, uh, will be passed on for the next round.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And are there any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Um, next item was also coming from, um, Parking Recreation. Alder Person Caravelo.
Yes, uh, thank you. This is R eighty-eight of twenty twenty-two, a resolution by the common council of the city of Stoughton to vacate Nordic Ridge Outlet Number Seven for Parks and Recreation and I so move.
And is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Alder Person Legaki. Alder Person Caravelo. And, and I'll let you know, since you're not here, there were some changes, um, that were made under resolution by City Attorney Dregney. Do you want to cover it first or have Matt run through it?
I will go ahead and let Matt have a go.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, is it possible to, are you able to put the red line that I emailed to you up?
Um, I think so.
Okay.
Um, let me just find it.
So at, uh, at least at a high level, I'll summarize my understanding of what, uh, what this resolution is intended to accomplish and then Dan can let me know if I'm off base. Um, so within the plat of Nordic Ridge, there is an outlot, Outlot Seven, that was dedicated originally with the intent in, that that would be a, um, a mini park, sometimes called a tot lot. Um, this resolution, uh, indicates that, that Outlot Seven has not been developed as a park and is not needed as a park because, uh, there is in fact a neighborhood park that, um, already serves that neighborhood. And, um, this resolution indicates that it is, it's not, that Outlot Seven is not needed for park purposes, uh, that there are costs associated with developing and maintaining that outlot as a park. Um, the resolution indicates that, uh, yeah, particularly as revised.
Shows up as a blue line for some reason.
Great, great. So the, the blue line down the screen shows the edits. Um, uh, all of the edits that I've made in the, um, in the recitals are, I would call them not substantive, they're not substantive changes, they're just clarifications, um, including clarifying that, um, there's a statute that authorizes the city council to apply to the Dane County Circuit Court for vacating land that's been dedicated for park purposes, um, indicating that, um, Bob DeVorak, who was the developer of Nordic Ridge, has signed a cost reimbursement agreement that requires him to pay all costs for legal services incurred in connecting with vacating Outlot Seven. And also indicating that Bob DeVorak has represented to the city that he will donate twenty thousand to the city, uh, twenty thousand dollars to the city if Outlot Seven is vacated and that such donation could be used to purchase additional lands for, uh, the park system. The resolution itself authorizes the following. One, that, uh, the city attorney would be authorized to apply to the Dane County Circuit Court to vacate Outlot Seven. Two directs that, uh, the donation of, uh, I'm sorry. First, it approves the cost reimbursement agreement. Second, authorizes the city attorney to apply for vacation, vacating Outlot Seven. And finally directs that, uh, the donation of twenty thousand dollars would be put in the park development fund for land acquisition purposes. Um, I removed language in the resolution. I'm not exactly sure what the history of this language is. There was language indicating that future property taxes generated from this property after the vacation of the dedication would be placed in the park development fund for land acquisition. I don't think that's, um, something the council can do because you can't tie the fut- the, the future council's hands with respect to how those dollars would be spent. Those are legislative decisions that the council will need to make each year in terms of how those dollars would be spent. Um, and so that's it. Uh, Dan, did I miss anything important?
No, I think you covered pretty much everything. It's, you know, it's the, the usefulness of the park being a block away from Nordic Ridge Park, um, it's just not there and really was the, uh, the cost of actually, you know, developing the park and maintaining it in future years. So typically tot lots are placed in underserved areas, um, like Crystal Park would be a good example where there's no park land within walking distance of that neighborhood. Um, but with Nordic Ridge Park being so close to there, it just doesn't provide any utilitarian use.
All right. Are there any questions or comments? Alder Person Hunt?
Um, I was looking at the map. I, I'm having difficulty identifying where Outlot Seven is. And the reason I was hoping to identify it is I was wondering how large it is compared to like the other lots in the subdivision? Is it the same size?
There is, Dan. What was the lot number?
It's, it's, if you go south, um, area then.
Yeah, it's eighties.
It's O L seven right there off Addison Drive. And it's, yeah, it's the size of a normal home lot.
Okay. Um, if it's the size of a normal lot, wouldn't the value be more than a twenty thousand dollar donation? Or who owns the land and is he buying the land? Are we simply turning it over to him for a twenty thousand dollar donation rather than selling the land if we owned it?
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, I have, uh, I have advised that the city isn't able to enter into a contract to sell the land under these circumstances. Uh, instead, what the city can do is apply to the circuit court to vacate the earlier dedication of the land.
Okay.
So that's what the resolution authorizes. If that, if the court approves that, because the city doesn't, when land is dedicated for park purposes, city doesn't own it outright. The city doesn't own all right title and interest to that land. The city's interest in that land is limited to the authority to use it for park purposes.
Okay.
And if the city chooses to not use it for park purposes and asks a court to vacate the dedication, then the statute provides that, uh, the land would revert, uh, back to, to private ownership. And it says it shall belong to the owner or owners of adjoining lands. Goes on to indicate that if multiple individuals own adjacent lots, then the land will be annexed to the lots to which it originally belonged, if that can be asked. annexed to the lots to which it originally belonged, if that can be ascertained. If not, the land will shall be equally divided between the owners of the lands on each side. So that's what the, the legal process entails. So as I understand it, the developer here, Bob DeVorek, presumably owns the adjacent lands and is expecting that after this vacation, you know, he will take title. I suspect that's one of the reasons he's offered to make a twenty thousand dollar donation to the city. It is technically a donation, it's not purchase price for the sale of land. It's, it's a donation. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's the best I can do, I think.
Yeah, I think I understand it, but is it officially city property, his property, mixed?
You mean today?
Yeah.
The best way to understand it today is that the land, the city has, the, the abutting property owners hold a reversionary interest in the land. Their right, their reversionary interest in the land is currently subordinate to the city's right to use the land for park purposes. So it's not as if either the city or the abutting owners hold all of the rights to that land. They're divided right now in, in, between the reversionary interest of the adjacent landowners and the city's limited right to use it for park purposes.
Okay. Have the lots one seventy-one and one seventy-two had residences built on them already?
I believe they're in the process of closing and developing those properties.
Okay.
So the idea is they would purchase, or they would build a, a home here as well. And in the, part of the resolution, we tried to break down what we thought were advantages of just vacating the lot. So just for us to maintain the lot, for example, mowing for our Public Works guys, we figure it'd be nine hundred and sixty dollars a year. If there's a home built on there, we estimate we'll get thirty-seven hundred dollars a year in impact fees, or one-time impact fees of thirty-seven hundred dollars, and in addition eighty-nine dollars for a trail impact fee. The property taxes on a four hundred thousand dollar home would be about thirty-two hundred dollars a year, city's portion. And then we also gain the advantage of the net new construction at about thirty-one hundred dollars a year, and then the donation as well. So on an annual basis, we'll continue to save on the cost of maintaining the tot lot if it were to maintain intact. We will continue to collect the city's portion of the property tax, which as Matt described, will go into the general fund. And then the net new construction, what it does is it raises our, our levy base by thirty-one hundred dollars, so that's kind of an ongoing thing. It'll always, you know, be at least at that level. So, you know, we think financially it's a good move. The, the lot really doesn't serve a purpose, it doesn't give us access to anything, and there's a huge park right there anyway. So that's kind of why we came to the conclusion. Plus, if somebody puts a home there, you know, potentially it'll be another family that may relocate to Stoughton, or an existing family that would purchase that house. So we think it's kind of a win all around from that viewpoint.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to have much use as a park. I'm just a little concerned about the propriety of returning it back to, to Bob DeVorek unless he owns all of the surrounding land yet.
He does.
He does.
Yeah, and he's in the process of selling that.
Okay.
And the other thing is, is when they dedicated the park, the park is large enough to cover the additional land that we're losing here, so we still meet what our normal dedication requirements would be.
Okay. All right.
Did I miss anything, Dan?
I think you covered it.
Yeah, you didn't think I paid attention at them committee meetings, did you?
[laughing]
Any other questions or comments? Thanks for your questions, Fred. Those are good questions, and I think we tried to cover them as we deliberated at the committee level, so. At this point, I guess we'll just vote on it. Those in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. All right, item seventeen is R eighty-nine, and this one here, I think this one came from Parks, but I'm not really sure if it just came directly here. Alder Person Caravella, you want to introduce it?
Sure, if I can.
I'll pull it up for you here.
Okay, there it is. Sure, I'll introduce this one. This is R eighty-nine of twenty twenty-two directing the Director of Parks and Recreation to accept two hundred and thirty-nine thousand and two hundred dollars in Department of Natural Resources stewardship grant funds for Riverfront Development Phase Two Upland Trails, and I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Legaki, Alder Person Caravella, and how about if Dan is available?
Okay, so, yeah, this is the same grant program that, that was just, you know, I was just authorized to apply for again this year, and we applied for it last year, and we were awarded two grants out of that grant program. The two hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred from the stewardship grant program from the state, and then additional nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars from the National Park Service from the Land Water Conservation Fund. The two hundred and thirty-nine thousand two hundred, those are for the Upland Trails in the River Park area. And then the nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, that's, that's going to be applied towards the river, the actual river park itself, like the in-water improvements. So the state's obviously faster as far as processing their paperwork, so this grant contract's already, you know, been approved and sent to us. And the nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar grant from the Land Water, Park Service for, in the form of the Land Water Conservation Fund grant, that'll get finalized once the permits are approved later this summer. So, you know, the highlighted items right there, those are the ones that are actually funded by the stewardship grant. So you can see, this is just the cost estimate that was provided to them.
Dan, one question that comes up from time to time is, you know, where does this grant money come from?
Well, the stewardship grant, I think, that, I'm not exactly sure where that comes from. It's through the DNR, it might be just general, general fund allocation, but the Land Water Conservation Fund is from offshore drilling permits. That's how that program's funded.
Interesting.
Okay. Do Alders have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries. Item eighteen is coming from the Finance Committee, Alder Person Schumacher.
All right, R ninety of twenty twenty-two, collateral assignment of development agreement with RHD Properties LLC for Fifty-One West Project, so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Person Reeves, Alder Person Schumacher.
And that is the, not the long, long developer agreement, but part of that and that sets up the letter of credit that we have for the Fifty-One West development, so that can get moving.
Yeah, the lender for the development project that will be providing a letter of credit is required that the city approve the developer's collateral assignment of the development agreement to the bank. I have reviewed it, and this is something the city has done on other projects of this sort, where the lender who's providing financing is requiring the developer to assign the rights under the development agreement to the lender, and they're primarily interested in the financial aspects of the development agreement and the opportunity to, to receive TIF funding as a source of collateral for financing the project.
And this was related to one of our conflict of interest agreements that we did in the last meeting, is that right?
Yeah, I, I think the bank was represented by an attorney at the Boardman Firm, and they prepared the collateral assignment, sent it to me, I reviewed it, and it looked appropriate.
Got it.
All right, any questions or comments on the letter of credit? Seeing none, all in the favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed?
No.
One opposed, okay. Thank you, that motion carries. And then item number nineteen is, comes to us from the Stoughton Opera House Friends Association, also known as SOFA, and what they'd like to do is renew the facility use agreement. And basically, I believe Attorney Dregney had drafted this, and they go by their season, they don't go by calendar, they go by the season that they operate their shows, and we charge them for use of the rooms there. And if you've been there, you've probably seen they've upgraded the rooms with money that they fundraised for, and they've put in a lounge and live streaming throughout our old city offices that were there. So we're looking for, for a motion to basically renew the agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Hunt?
Second.
Second by, was that Healy?
Healy.
All right, thank you. Anything you want to add, Attorney Dregney?
No.
All right, any questions or comments from Alders? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Item number twenty, this one here we're bringing forward is kind of an update of an ongoing thing with litigation regarding North American Fur Auctions and NAFA Properties and Stoughton LLC, and I don't know, we have an opportunity to go in the closed session. I'll start with the city attorney and see where he wants to go with this.
I'll provide some basic background in open session, but then we'll be seeking to discuss the city's litigation strategy and negotiation strategy, and would recommend doing that in closed session. So for open session purposes at a high level, the city did file a lawsuit, we on behalf of the city filed a lawsuit on January twenty-sixth of this year against North American Fur Auctions and NAFA Properties Stoughton LLC, seeking a judgment in the amount of forty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars plus interest arising, that, that's based on the city's agreements entered into in twenty sixteen with NAFA, requiring NAFA to guarantee certain levels of tax increment revenues. They have not made the payment they're required to make in, for tax increment collection year twenty twenty-one, last year. And so we are now moving into a court-ordered mediation process, and so I have my colleague, Isaac Broadkey, appearing by Zoom. He is involved with me in managing the litigation itself and would like to brief the council on the status of this and obtain direction from the council regarding how, how you'd like us to proceed. So, and we think that discussion should happen in closed session.
All right, so you recommend we go in closed session now?
I do.
Okay. Would somebody like to read the language to go into closed session? An old jump it was?
I don't have that number.
I can put it on the screen if you wish. Let me find it here. It's going to be right down here, and I can even enlarge the print. All right, who wants to take a stab at it?
I can read it.
Okay.
The common council may convene in closed session per State Statute nineteen point eight-five, paron one, paron G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning a strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved, may be convened in closed session, in closed session. The common council may reconvene in an open session to discuss and take action on the subject matter discussed in the closed session, and I so move.
Second. A second by Alder Person Jensen. Any questions or comments before we take a roll call vote?
I would just note that it's my expectation that we'll seek direction from the council in closed session and likely adjourn from closed session. So if anyone is wondering if the council's going to reconvene in open session and take action, I would say that is highly unlikely.
All right, and Candy, when you're ready, we'll do a roll call vote to go into closed session.
Okay, I'm ready. Billy?
Aye.
Hirsch?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Legaki?
Aye.
Mijaski?
Aye.
Reeves?
Aye.
Hunt?
Aye.
Schumacher?
Aye.
Vanagus? Oh, excuse me, she's accepted an excuse. Takowski?
Aye.
Caravella?
Aye.
Rath?
Aye.
We have eleven Alders ready.
All right, um, let's see. Let me just.